Thank you, Julie. I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone, nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome this evening. Through our vote call, note that our member Howard Burnham is absent. And I will call for the other members. Freeman?
Here.
Butch?
Here.
Neil?
Here.
Patrice Scott here. All right. For our first matter this evening, we need to look at our minutes of May 1st. And I've read through the minutes. I have two corrections on page five. One's simple, just a mistake. At the very first line, the sign would be, I believe the record indicates it's 60 feet from the federal housing, not 100 feet. And then, under Butch Cushing's comments, after it's a gateway into town?
What page? The same page?
Oh, same page.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I listened to the DVD, and I just wanted to add, "N signs are unattractive." That was a statement he made.
The rest of that sentence?
Right. So, "N signs are unattractive." Does anybody else have anything? I also had, on page seven, under the last bullet of Sharon Penny's comments, I find it just a little confusing, and I'm wondering if, I thought we should just strike some of it. The two sentences, Sharon Penny said, "The point of reference on any application is specific only to that application. Past and future criteria is usually not admissible as it is conjecture." To me, I don't remember that. I don't, and I just, that doesn't make sense to me. Past criteria, it's not conjecture. And then the last sentence. And I wanted to just see what the board felt about this paragraph. I understand we had quite a lot of discussion going on.
I can speak to my intent, if that makes sense.
Right, right. I know what was intended in that, but the wording of this is just, I find, very confusing.
Well, it's transcribed that way sometimes, so this is probably a good time to clarify.
Right, so that's why I wondered if we can get the intent and summarize it.
My intent? Just boil it down to say that there were, I, let's see. Okay, this was a follow-up to Bush's com, Butch's, excuse me, commentary, in reference to the theoretical allowance-
Possibility.
Yeah, of additional billboards in the future. And I just was trying to make the case that we should, you know, keep our eye on specifically what was in front of us, and that any conjecturing about what theoretically might happen can't be brought into-
Right, that we can't consider-
No.
Conjecture.
We can't project.
Right. Okay, well, I felt that if we just left the two sentences, the first sentence and then the third sentence, that was clear, and the rest was really, I just find the rest confusing.
Do you want to restate what you think is-
Yeah, why not? Right, so why don't we, Sharon Penny said, "The point of reference on any application is specific only to that application," period. Then, "We are not dealing with future billboard expansion now, only the one application on a case-by-case basis."
You're going to strike the rest?
And I would move to strike, yeah, the other two sentences. Just, it's confusing. But I want to see, you know, do other people find that, or is it just me?
I like that. I like it. That's fine.
Okay. You're just trying to simplify.
So, what, yeah, just trying to simplify. I just find that language confusing. So, why don't we just strike the second sentence and the fourth sentence?
You think that pretty much makes your point?
Right, is there anything else you think that's in there?
No, I mean, the point is clear. I was just giving examples at the time, because I think folks were confused about where we should be going-
Right.
On, in the future stuff.
Okay, well, I think that deals with the two, the issue, and just is less confusing. So, those would be the corrections. And I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Butch and Freeman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Now, before moving on to our public hearing, I wanted to add to the agenda, just considering that our next meeting is the day before the Fourth of July, people may be out of town, and I didn't know if the board would want to move our meeting to the next week, which would be the, let's see, it should be the 10th? The 10th.
The day before?
The day, it's Tuesday, the 3rd.
July 3rd.
July 3rd.
I wasn't sure if we would have a forum, if people had vacation plans, if the applicants, it's just, it's a kind of an awkward date, because the holiday falls right in the middle of the week. And you do have the wherewithal, under the chairman's direction, to change your meeting day, so.
Right, and if we're going to do that, I wanted to do that, you know, at the outset.
I would be here, but I might be the only one.
I would probably be here. I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm flexible.
I can pretty much guarantee I won't be here.
You won't be here, okay. And I'm not sure about Howard either, so that's why I think, I would think it would be good to move it for July, just, I'd like to keep it our first Tuesdays, that's our normal meeting, but in this case, because it falls right before the holiday.
So, it'd be the second Tuesday of the month?
It would be the second Tuesday, so that would be July 10th. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Now, we would like to open a public hearing on case number 211-019 SE-06-0512, the request for special exception to allow manufactured goods in the guise of a bakery at 65 Cooksville Road in the ag zone. This use is allowed by special exception in the agricultural zone. All right, we have our applicants here, I believe. Would you like to tell us what your proposal is? Yes, please.
Okay, well, our proposal is, we have already been licensed by the state of New Hampshire with a homestead license, which we brought our license, let me take that. And that allows us to manufacture baked goods in our home and sell them outside of our premises at farmers' markets or any retail establishment. What we would like to do is to be able to not only produce the goods at our home, but to have our customers come to our home and pick them up, so that we don't have to always go out to a farmer's market or depend on outside retail. And we did bring, we were told that you like pictures, so. We also photoshopped our house and put in a sign on the outside where we think it would go, and the name of our bakery is The Wicked Good Bakery, New Hampshire, New Hampshire National. And you would also put a sign on the porch.
That's where you had your first potential customer, I think.
Yes, yes. Yes, he does like to do things.
Sounds sinful.
No, wicked, good, that's New Hampshire. And these are just pictures of our kitchen, where we would actually be doing work and selling products.
And it wouldn't have any, it would be a sit-down area or anything like that, it would just be picking up product.
Because we do not have a homestead license.
Yeah, it's photoshopped. Now, does your kitchen have to be certified to do this?
It is, but licensed by the state. Yes.
Yep, there you have it.
That's what that license signifies. Yep.
Wicked nice-looking grounds, I can tell you that.
Thank you. That looks great.
Madam Chair, before we get too far into this, I think it would be good for us to determine the retail listed? Right. So, we don't have to- Yep, I was going to ask about that.
From far field.
Right, reading through your application. It's in our narrative. You mentioned that you would have a minimal retail. Could you explain that? Because if you didn't have retail, basically, this could be a home occupation, right? You wouldn't need a special exception, but the retail aspect of it is why you need a special exception. And so, when you contemplate on the retail part, could I walk up from my house and just, you know, see what you have in there?
Yes, yes.
That's a kind of thing.
We would like people, you could either call in and order, email us in order, and we could have it ready for you when you got there. We would like to have, you know, muffins, cinnamon rolls, things like that, for people in the morning, on a Saturday morning, if you wanted to walk in.
Right, walk in.
And get six cinnamon rolls to take home for your family.
Just to articulate the point a little more, and this is where zoning gets so wonderfully ambivalent. We had spoken to you, Brian and I, our zoning officer, and your husband also, and it was just a little confusing at first as to what type of retail. Was it only retail in that you were selling to folks who would preorder and thereby come in and pick it up, only because you were not distributing it to them? You were selling it to them, but the distribution process was not direct? Or could there be walk-in sales? We understand that there won't be any sit-down eating, and that's perfectly fine and allowed under this, but I could show up on a Saturday morning if I felt like it, and you would have some merchandise there-
Yes.
Buy the cupcake or whatever. Okay, so that, in that aspect, the retail aspect does apply, and you, we're just trying to triple-check that you need the special exception.
Yes.
Otherwise, we could just give you the blessing and send you out the door, and it would just be a home occupation.
Yes, that's exactly, that's exactly what we would like.
So, we're not at cross purposes here, then? No, good.
Okay, so you do intend to just be able to sell for people who come to walk in?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about anything in the application? How about, let's ask about parking areas, if you're contemplating people preordering and then coming to pick up, and you, I drove out to see, you do have a nice driveway. I'm jealous of you driving. I can't even fit my old cars in my driveway.
Yes. We have plenty of parking, and if, if we should ever be so fortunate to be so busy that there was not enough parking out front, people could drive around back and park out back.
Right, so that's not an issue. You have plenty of area for parking.
I have a question. Was that, is the house an apartment house, or was it?
Not to my knowledge.
Was it at one time an apartment house? It's always been a single-family residence.
And have you had discussion with your neighbors?
We actually went to visit them when we submitted our application. And we, we went with Strugger, with Bob Carpenter.
I was just looking for it.
To our brothers. We wouldn't consider that a bribe, just what we-
Sampling of wares.
Sampling of the wares.
Very neutral.
And the carpenters, Mrs. Carpenter was thrilled. She thought it would be a great thing. And Joni, she liked our pie, I'm not sure.
Actually, when I just did it up, my hand was so happy.
Wow, that's great. All right, well, that's good. And how about in your neighborhood in general? Do you have, have new neighborhoods changed? Do you have a lot of younger kids or grandkids running around? Is there a lot of activity? It's pretty, pretty quiet.
It's, it's a pretty quiet neighborhood. I don't think, we've been there since 93, and it's pretty much been the same. It's fairly quiet. And we, our end of the road, and we don't really, you know, the trailer park, I think it's more older families. I don't think there are a lot of children in our area.
Is there any other business on that road? I can't remember. Is there any other business on that road?
I have a, a construction business that I've based out of there, but I don't really have anything, you know, to meet the public there, you know? I might give to the customers something there, go somewhere, park it over.
Okay, well, why don't I ask, any other questions? Neil?
Nothing I can think of right now.
Okay. Well, why don't I open the public hearing for anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application?
I'm definitely in favor. How many pre-pies do you think?
All right, okay. I'll note that Joan Randlett is present, and I also had a, I wanted to say that I had a call from John Randlett, who let me know he could not be here this evening, but that he was in favor. So, if anybody on the board, if anybody ever calls, we just need to be able to reveal that at a public hearing.
And these are two of Butters, direct Butters?
Right, they're direct to Butters, and spoke, and just wanted to say we had no opposition and had supported the application. All right, is there anybody here who'd like to speak in opposition? Or say anything neutral? All right, thank you. That's the public hearing. So, we will now, the board will discuss its findings of that, and we can sit down, and then we'll go through our pointee for the application. Would anybody like to offer a coming due?
Well, I would say they have ample parking.
Right. How about the property is five acres? In the ag zone? Located at a dead end? With ample space for parking?
I would say that Cooksville Road is not a high-density neighborhood.
Okay, is it Cook, Cooksville or Cooksville?
Yes.
Cooksville Road.
A spell check came up every time.
And what do you, what do you mean by that?
It's not a-
Not a high-density?
Right, the lots are large, and there's a lot of spacing between the houses. There aren't that many houses on Cooksville.
Okay, it's a high, high-density or low-density?
Low-density.
Low-density.
Well, so it's not a high-density.
Right, okay, so is a low-density neighborhood. Okay. How about, proposed business use is on a small scale, similar to other home occupations? Other home occupations, to existing. Okay, is there anything else you think we need to note?
It was recommended by the town inspectors.
Well, the department heads had no-
Oh, right, department heads.
Negative impact findings, yeah.
Department heads. Let's see, how did they put that? Concur, no impact, would resolve. Okay, anything else? How about there'll be no onsite consumption? Consumption of goods? Other than by the family? No, customers aren't allowed to consume.
They're not going to have seating. They're not going to have seating in tables.
No, right. So, it's not, it proposes a restaurant, in any fashion, or cafe, or anything like that. Okay. All right, is that, can anyone think of anything else?
I was thinking they could have a drive-up.
Neil?
That's going to require coming back to the board of adjustments.
Okay, I think, why don't we, people are going to go through our criteria, and then we'll start. Number one, the proposed use shall be only those allowed in this ordinance by special exception. Freeman?
True.
Yep?
True.
Okay, and I would cite Article 3, Section 304, manufacturer of goods sold on premises. That's, that's why they're here, for a special exception. Number two, the specific site is in appropriate location and of adequate size for the use.
True.
Freeman? Yep?
True.
True?
True.
True, unanimous. All right, number three, the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True. True.
Is that true?
True.
That's true. Four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
True, they have ample space. True.
True. And I would cite the, all our department heads have checked that out.
True.
That's true, okay, that's unanimous. Number five, the use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities.
True. True.
I find that true, based on department head's recommendation?
True.
Okay, unanimous. Number six, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True. True.
Okay, true?
True.
Find that to be true. Okay, now, before we make, I entertain a motion, we would pass the motion first before we would, if it's passed, to attach any conditions? That's correct. Okay, so I would entertain a motion. The board's pleasure.
Move we adopt?
Move to accept the application?
Right.
Move to approve the application as presented, as requested.
Okay. Your words. Fine.
Okay, Neil's second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we pass. Now, we move on to imposing any kind of conditions that we think would be appropriate?
Could I just interject for a moment? I would just like to take this opportunity to explain a little bit on the plan of recommendation about the site plan. We're a little bit between a rock and a hard place here, not this particular application, but the planning board will be getting to, and that's a definitive. Having an opportunity for minor site plan review, something like this, in the aspect that it's in now, with, you know, no huge industrial kitchen, they've already had their okay from the state, there's no overt impacts or anything, this would really warrant a minor site plan review. When the planner report went out, there was a little confusion, as we discussed before, as to the scope of what was going to go on, and I had to get the planner report out for the statutory requirements. Now that I understand a little more clearly, it's been a little more clearly defined, that the scope is actually quite small. At first, I thought you were going to be in the, the old dairy barn, it just was very confusing, back and forth. I would like to suggest to the board that rather than a bona fide site plan before the planning board with their approval, the implementation of this special exception contingent on their approval, that Brian, and as the zoning officer, building inspector, and myself, give it a look, see, and just make sure everything is kosher. Because, I mean, you've essentially said that it is by all the findings of facts, and, you know, if you would agree that the scale is quite small. I think if I bring it before the planning board, which I could, it's going to be strictly pro forma. I mean, I can get a sign off on it, but it would be a bit of overkill.
Well, my, the questions I had were, because they're not actually building anything or expanding.
No, right.
So, I mean, that, I was actually questioning why they don't-
Whereas you have it, well, see, this is where the ambivalence comes. For a site plan review, it says, "Any expansion of use," which it is, of a site or structure, "such that there is a significant effect on the quantitative or qualitative requirements of these site plan regulations." Not really, and maybe Mr. Murphy could speak to that, but it's a bit of a gray area, and I don't want to put an undue burden on the applicant. I would like to see a sketch, you know, just a basic schematic, and Mr. Sleeper's in construction, so, you know, just a bird's-eye view, whatever, given us the-
Top view.
Yeah, the kitchen pictures and stuff, which is great, maybe we can bring up something like that. I would just hate to have to have full-blown planning board, yea or nay, contingent on site plan approval on an application that is modest. So, I'd take that for what it's worth.
Well, I'm not prepared to know whether, myself, whether it needs a site plan review or not.
Well, I made that as a recommendation, and now I'm modifying it somewhat.
Right. And the only, literally, the only concern I had, and what we are now considering when imposing any conditions, the only problem I have, considering the future, what if it grows to be a really big business, and you have, you know, lots of cars coming through the neighborhood and stuff? That, I would just say, if, because you've proposed, what you've proposed is on such a modest, minor scale, and you don't even have to do any building to accommodate it, I would just want to put in the condition that in the future, if you expand at all in any greater fashion, that it would start impacting neighbors, that it does require a site plan review. And how we do that-
That it's usually triggered by the building permits for expansion, or renovation of the barn, or, you know, it's sort of self-policing to a certain extent?
Right, and what I would say is, what, when we grant a special exception, and we'll put that in the language of the restrictions, we're granting it for this very specific purpose. It's a small-scale home, same as a home occupation, basically. And if it were to get to be a bigger thing, then you might even want to find a new building, you know, in the future, but that would be something that would be subject to a site plan review, if we're talking about a major business getting started in your neighborhood. That's, you know, that's not what this approval is for. So, that's, that's all, and I wanted to be able to figure out how we do that as on the zoning within our parameters. And so, we should just offer any kind of conditions that we want to put on?
Well, that's kind of a, as we said before, somewhat implicit. I mean-
Well, implicit, but I, I just want to make sure, since it's not going, I was feeling very comfortable, because the planning board was going to have to look at it, as far as, it is a change in use. It's, I mean, you're asking, it's a retail business in a residential zone, it is in the ag zone. So, I would just offer as any conditions is what was represented to us, that no onsite consumption of goods. And if you want to do that, if you want to open a little cafe, then that, you'd have to come back and get approval for that. And if there's any kind of building, then you would have to get the site plan review. And as long as we understand that, that's, you know, I'm perfectly satisfied that this is a very small-scale thing that would fit appropriately in your neighborhood now, but who knows what will happen in the future? And as long as we understand that, I think we just need to make sure we have that understanding. So, what I was going to offer is, just in our conditions- So what I was going to offer is, just in our conditions, just to list, that no onsite consumption of goods. The scope of business be limited to home occupation parameters. And that, those restrictions are on page thirty-three of our zoning ordinance. It's Article Four, Section Four Twelve. So I can.
But, as a suggestion, Madam Chair. With the addition. Right, but we need to, I think it's important for future folks coming back to look at this to reiterate the fact that there, that retail, walk-in retail, let's call it walk-in retail is allowed, just so that's really clear. Because that's what makes it different from the home occupation.
Right.
Conditions don't always have to be restrictive, sometimes they can restate.
We can restate that, right, and that's why I wanted to say, you know, our findings too, that, so we understand for the record in the future, this is what we understood the business was going to be. And if there's any change from that, then you just need to get different permission. So we said, no onsite consumption of goods, scope of business limited to home occupation standards. And what about saying.
Physical expansion of the structure or the parking area would require site plan review.
Right, that's good. That's all, just for protection in the future, if there's, and that's what would be required, right? If we're talking about significant expansion of the business.
Right, that's pro forma, and like I said, that would be triggered by our usual oversight. I mean, you could state it, but, but it's implicit, and it, there's a mechanism in place.
Right, well, it's listed under, you know, in our section listing, conditions that we should, and it says shall, impose relevant conditions under the statute, that requiring any future enlargement or alteration of use be accomplished only with the board of.
Right.
Adjust, that's pro forma, but what I'm, I understand our statute to require that we say that as a condition of a special exception. So that's why I just want to be able to make sure.
So our intent is clear.
Right, so our intent is clear, and we're all on the same sheet, and sometimes, lots of times in zoning cases, it seems like we're two ships passing in the night, and they heard one thing and we said something else, so, okay? Yes, Mr. Murphy?
I need to fish in power when it comes to these things, I'm almost staff, I'm almost audience, but thank you for that. Just a caution, when it comes to the restriction that you're talking about, if Mr. Sleeper wants to put it on the bedroom of his house, that has nothing to do with his business.
Exactly.
So, I would propose that when the kitchen is ready for your first customer, that we take that as the footprint that you will occupy. Any expansion, you know, no store room, anything that's related to the business that we can specifically say, and it's going to be fishy to do this because it's a domestic, a Trump kitchen that you're working out. In order to protect your rights as a former resident, and also respect the board's wishes, you got to find something, so that would be my proposal, if the board sees it, that when you're ready to go, we say, okay, this is it. Anything beyond this point would require a site plan review. That way, when you go to replace the steps, you don't have to go see the planning board or be replacing them.
Specifically tied to.
Because we tied it to.
To the business, expansion of business.
Yeah, but you can't, yeah.
Right, that's what I.
We all know we're talking now, yours is just how to put it down.
Right, and I had, if the retail business grows significantly, that a site plan review would be warranted. But that's, yes, we're just talking about your business expanding and nothing else.
I feel comfortable with having that put in. But the other thing, hopefully you are very successful. And speaking from experience, I started a little business at one time out of a house, and I used to pick my supplies up in a car. But as we got more successful, I started taking deliveries by truck to truck. So, and then I had to make that decision, I had to move on to another. But if you are successful, you know, those are things that you don't have to start, but when I first started, I was picking stuff up in a car. And then as things got. Grow, and you want to expand, and there's all kinds of opportunities, and you take a turn, next thing you know, you're impacting the neighborhood maybe a little bit more than you anticipated. And then there's a decision that you have to make for moving, is there enough business to support this next location I move into, or can I hang on here? How much longer can I hang on here? So just keep that in mind, just from a little experience.
Okay, so do you think we have the retail app, the walk-in retail? Yes, walk-in, we should make a walk-in retail.
Is allowed.
Is allowed. And is, I mean, that's considered in the scope of what they're doing?
So I have one, two, three, four. Hopefully you have four too. Conditions.
Two, three.
On-site consumption, the statement that it is, oh, that retail walk-in business is allowed. I'm just going with the things that are not.
Right, we mentioned the scope of the home occupation, and whether that can be one along with retail. Two separate ones is fine.
Yeah, well, it would be three, because you just said expansion only specific to the business itself, so I see that, I see, I just want to make sure we're together, so it's one, two, three.
Right. Requiring the site plan. Okay, well, I feel very, very comfortable with that. Is there anything, anybody else would like to add or can think of?
So you'll need to get a vote on your conditions.
On the conditions, okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the conditions.
So moved.
Hey, Blitch?
Second.
Okay, Neil's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, thank you.
That's it.
That's it, you got it, and you've got your conditions. And thank you, and good luck, and you know what? You also got a name that I was trying to get from my daughter. Wicked Goods. Wicked Good Something in, at the Secretary of State's office. That's an interesting process, isn't it? Trying to get a name approved?
It started with wicked soup, I forget.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh, yeah, it was very interesting, so I wish you good luck, and are you making gluten-free things, or?
All milk, with my.
Good, the stuff I like.
Heart attacks.
Walk on over. All right, thank you, and good luck. And thanks, Joan, for coming. So now I get back to my agenda here. Let it go, it's yours. Okay, now we are moving on to unfinished business. We have a motion to rehear the two cases that we heard at our last sitting. Two requests for special exceptions for, get rid of this. For two billboards. Does everybody have, I will read what.
It's in these documents, there's a cover letter, and then the attachment. And then the notice of decision with the specifics.
And I would just like to say, I will read what, the explanation of the appeal. On the first one that I have is on two thirty-two, zero, zero, eight, and that was the one down on Route Three, the Ashland-Bridgewater quarter. So the decision, the denial of the special exception is being requested to be reheard. The decision is being appealed because the zoning board of adjustment longfully, wrongly, used the arguments for the variance request to deny the special exception. The variance requests are part of a separate application process and are to be considered on their individual merits after the special exception for the use is granted. The conditions set forth in the variance request can then be tied to the special exception. The variance requests are not to be used to deny the special exception. The special exception only deals with location within the zone and does not deal with dimensional features that are to be covered under the variance request. In addition to the misinterpretation of the procedure, a ZBA member made comments like, "I don't like billboards." Those comments are not germane to the application and show an obvious prejudice. Okay, so this is the first, there were two special exceptions that we denied, so this is the rationale that's used, asking us to rehear. The first one is the same rationale being used to appeal the second. So the board, I think we should discuss whether, number one, what our procedure is. We may rehear a case, we don't have to, it's up to the board to decide whether they want to, and we need to limit our consideration to what was requested or stated in the notice of the rehearing. So, I'll open it up for the board to discuss.
So are we going to discuss the merits of their application, or are we just going to discuss the.
The merits of their rationale. The merits of this.
Right, we just, on our motion, or on this discussion, we just need to decide what they asked us to do in the appeal, and whether we feel that, you know, if, we need to rehear it.
Well, my personal opinion is, I don't believe we went outside of the merits to begin with. Maybe.
Okay, well, I can say, I listened to the tape again, and I personally feel that we considered lots of things. But there were times where the discussion of size of billboards and the proximity to the road did enter into the discussion. And I can say that wasn't just, that the applicant himself, presenter, was actually mentioned those things, and it's actually contained in their special exception request, so it's not. I can, I don't really consider that erroneous, other than, I mean, if you're basing your decision on those things, those things are to be considered separately in a variance. But it was, it was presented in the special exception application, and it's kind of hard after, after reading things and hearing them to dismiss that from your, from your mind. Although, you know, I understand that is the preferable and proper way to consider things. So it's just a matter of, if we feel that our rationale was supported by, I mean, we went through the special exception criteria, we did not go through the variance criteria when we were discussing the matter. So I don't think that was a procedural error, per se. I think what his rehearing request is saying is that he felt we were considering elements of the variance, the dimensional requirements, and the placement inappropriately. Okay, that's how the applicant feels. So it's a matter of what does the board wish to do? When I read through our process and our, all our manuals and books, that request for a rehearing is not something that should be granted all the time, just to rehash something. But it's something that gives the board the opportunity to correct itself. So before an applicant would then, their next step would have to be to go to court to challenge. So it's our opportunity, and it's entirely up to the board whether we feel that it should be reheard or not.
I just, as the planner, as the reference, I would suggest that you folks go to your deliberative session of the minutes. As you know, the findings of facts are elicited, solicited, to give you a basis for your rationale to say yes or no, true or false. And part of the issue that this request is promulgated on, it starts on, I guess it starts on page five, if I haven't jumped ahead of myself yet, that's. Starts on page five, about halfway down with the bullet, the zoning board. In cases where the criteria was not considered appropriate, in some cases, that's, it's usually a false vote. But the applicant is citing some of the rationales that were taken directly from the DVD, from the video record, such as, for example, number four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. The two true votes gave the rationale that there was no overt distraction due to the angle of placement. Now, placement was discussed as the sign there, and that's, that's, that's not a variance because that's angle. Because a sign.
I mean.
Well, no.
There was discussion about the proximity.
The proximity to right-of-way and angle of sign are different things. There's one as close as, and the other as angle, I'm just using this as an example, not to get off course here. And then the three votes against this cited, oh, the billboard was oversized and too close to the setback, and that's where the variance discussion came into the special exception vote. I'm just trying to point that out.
I can understand that the applicant felt that, that we were considering variance, because those aspects, those two aspects, the size of the sign and the setback, those were to be dealt with in the variance. And so when those came into our discussion, in consideration of the special exception, I can see how.
Right, I'm just pointing out that that's how, that's why they feel that not only was it a perception on their part, but it was actually spoken to. I'm just trying to clarify and recognize.
Say mea culpa on that one, because I know I did that.
Oh, well, I don't know, I don't remember who did it, but that's what they're alluding to, not just their perception that.
Right, no, it did come into the discussion, and I can see why it was kind of muddled. Because the size, it's, again, because it was presented and in that first special exception, it's kind of hard to erase that request and knowledge when we're going through our criteria. But, so, you know, the issue is if we basically could reconsider and allow them to come in and go through their presentation and criteria again, or.
So that's what they're, basically, this request has come to present it to us again?
Right.
Right, a rehearing.
Rehearing.
And whether they present the same thing, it's the same application.
Right.
But maybe, maybe we can all learn from the way it was presented and the way it was discussed that.
In terms of protocol about what questions to ask, not allow.
Help us tighten up the procedures in knowing that when we have a request for a special exception, it is a separate consideration from what we will consider in the variance. And it is difficult, and when you're first dealing with these issues, to separate them out. But the matter of granting a special exception, a special exception is something that's permitted under our zoning ordinance, if it's, you know, asked for, and if certain conditions are met. And where we have discretion is when we're considering whether those conditions are met, and where we can all agree or disagree. And it's the cumulative board decision after going through the criteria of whether the conditions were met. And what we just want to make sure is when we're making, when we're going through that process, that we only consider the aspects of the special exception first. And then when we do the variance, you know, all the size and dimension requirements, setbacks, all of that comes in.
All right, I do believe that there was a little bit of confusion, because when Mr. French did, was doing his presentation, the, he even said that I probably doubt talking about the variance aspects of it.
Right.
And then we got involved in discussing that, plus the special exception. So, and like you said, it's hard to erase that once it's been brought up. Cat's out of the bag, and so it's hard to try, it's hard to do that. Cat's out of the bag, and so it's hard to try, it's hard to do that. It's, but I feel that we adequately discussed it. I feel that we went through all the proper procedures. Maybe our explanations weren't within the realm of the rules, but I do feel that we did adequately discuss it. I'm not opposed to having a rehearing, like you said, to help us maybe go through and tighten up the procedures and policies, but I do feel that we adequately did discuss it. So we had good representation from a neighbor that was out in one of the locations, and...
Right. Neil, how do you feel?
It seems to me that when you're considering adverse effect on the neighborhood and nuisance, that's a pretty broad area of discussion you're covering.
Right.
And you really have to discuss all these different, different aspects of...
But you can't, but you have to keep your field of vision germane to what is being discussed. I mean, you can't, you can't cite there is a nuisance because you know it's going to be oversized, because that's not the question. Step 1 is whether the special exception you feel can be allowed on its own merits, and then the particulars come in after under a variance. So they were kind of doing a 2, it was a bit of a 2-for-1 there. That's where the protocol got kind of squishy.
Right. And the other thing, Neil, I want to make sure we all understand, and I know this came up during the discussion, but what makes a billboard different from just a freestanding sign? And that is that the billboard is being used to advertise a business that's not on the site. So if we're thinking, oh, he doesn't need a billboard, he could just have a freestanding sign, well, the freestanding sign would have to advertise a business on the premises. It wouldn't suit his need for advertising for another business, which is what his proposed use was. So I think, I mean, I think that was a little muddled as far as, you know, in our consideration that if we granted a rehearing, it would give us the opportunity to be cleaner about whether we're going to grant a request for a billboard and not pay any attention to what the sign was, but the fact that they're asking for a billboard in 2 different sites and whether that's appropriate for those sites, not paying any attention to how close to the road it is or anything else, that we could go in and just cleaner, do a cleaner job on that consideration. And then if that was changed, if any of our votes changed, they would move to the next step. And I know as far as myself goes, I think it's been difficult when we have, it seems like every special exception we have, it comes with a variance now. And in the past, it used to be, you know, you get your special exception first, and then you, you consider if you want anything different and you need a variance for that. But I guess, you know, everybody's trying to consolidate time and effort and money and all of that, so we've been seeing these things together. But maybe it's easier, it's very difficult to knowing the full scope and having to rule on just the first part. And as you know, as in the zoning, we're trying to be neutral and detached and almost we're quasi-judicial here. So you want to give everybody a fair shake when they present their case, and in this case, we have somebody who felt that we were considering the wrong criteria when we made our decision.
I do, I agree with you on the, being able to see the whole picture. It's very difficult to take when you know the end of the book.
Yeah.
And you're reading the first chapter.
Yes.
It's very difficult to ignore that, so...
Another way to go, and excuse me for interrupting, but I just wanted to remind the Board, you know, another way in the future to proceed, to sort of give blind justice, if you will, is just to consider the special exception at one meeting. If it passes on its, strictly its own merits, because you don't know anything, then variance comes in after, as you said. But that protracts, you know, the timeframe. There's also the option with a special exception, if you know a variance is coming or whatever to apply or attach conditions to it. And that's where you're essentially, and don't misconstrue this, but essentially bargaining with the applicant for the right to get it done with some concessions, rather than to have to deal with a variance. They may agree to the conditions, and then it's one fell swoop.
Mm-hmm.
So there's options.
Right.
That's one of the hard things I have, giving a special exemption, and then having to tie variances with it. When you give that special exemption, you've basically said it's okay to do that. But then you tie it with these variances.
It's an inexact science. It's very difficult.
So I think that's where our, where there is a benefit to know what the end result is, so that you do save time overall with other things, so...
Right. And I don't fault anybody for doing it that way. I feel like it's almost, you know, we consider it withholding information if we only got the first one without knowing what the whole enchilada was going to be. So there's, it's just a matter of, but, and I thought, because we're, you know, a newly-comprised Board, I just thought it would be, maybe it would behoove us to have a redo, a retake on this one and try to clean up our procedures and go through the exercise of keeping things separate, the considerations separate.
Well, I don't have a problem with that.
Would the Chair entertain a motion?
I would definitely entertain a motion.
I move that we reconsider this, this hearing.
Okay. Both applications?
On both applications for the special exception and the variance request.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So I will speak to the applicant. There's no real definitive timeline on when they want to come back. The whole 30-day thing is pretty much over at this point, and I will let them know that our next meeting is July 10, and we can take it from there.
Okay. And that's great, and I appreciate everybody's understanding and willingness to try to improve our process.
And I just want to say, it's a very difficult, you have a very hard job. The ZBA is, I mean, it is Solomon, and it's so hard to keep it on track, because you can't unknow things, so...
Right. That is hard.
Hang in there.
Okay. So that is unfinished business. How about any new business?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And how about communications and other business?
Nothing.
Nope. All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.